Roll call.
Everybody's here.
And the head is here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have one change to the agenda. We are going to remove the personnel policy from the new business. Do we need to get the load on that? Yes. Do I need to move?
Yep.
I'll make a motion. Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor say yes.
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 The minutes from the meeting on July 21st.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Okay. Bills in between. There is a change from what's in your packet. There's an addition of $4,447 for the renovation of the gazebo for a total of $158,747.62.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Could you tell me that figure again for the gazebo?
Yeah, $158.
Just for the gazebo?
Seven forty-seven.
$158.47?
Seven forty-seven. Sixty-two.
The gazebo is...
So the total, the gazebo is $4,447 even. Okay.
That's just the extra. That's not the whole thing.
The change order.
It's the change order. You're adding the change order to this.
Correct.
And then we can decide, talk about whether we approve it or not when we get to that point as well. We...
You need to vote on it now, so it's a yes or no tonight.
Whether it's approved. Well, can I explain there's a change order? When you heard of this bid? I have a, I have the explanation for you in hand up. I have a seatbelt. I'm sorry, I lost that last Friday. They changed the roof?
You can have that sound up.
Oh, thank you.
I thought I might handy, but I don't.
So he made a bid and then something changed on it?
Yes. Here's kind of the explanation too.
What's that?
Because of all of the extended damage that wasn't showing when he made his bid. Was that underneath the ceiling, under the gazebo?
Okay, I'll, I have to read this later, so I'll just, you won't vote for it?
Okay.
Okay, I do have a copy for you. So I don't know if everyone has that back, but... Or a few prompts? Oh, yours? Oh, thank you. Okay. So, I don't know that I got...
You have a motion and a second.
All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no.
No.
No. If that doesn't... Okay.
That whole deal, I feel that was wrongly handled. I, we should've, we should've never paid that man Friday. It should've waited until tonight. I guess that's all I want to say, Bud.
Were there three no's? It was...
There was two no's and one...
There was three, three no's, I believe.
I've got three, three no's tonight. Five to three. It's Wes.
So I don't want to belabor the obvious, but you just voted on something that you decided last Friday.
I, I know, that's why I'm...
That wasn't on your agenda that was sent out to take any action on it.
They, they did not take the action. It was a bill in between that was paid.
Somebody just said that they paid it last Friday.
All these bills in between, those are all paid in between the meetings.
So you're just approving...
The bills.
Closing door after the horse is gone.
That is correct.
Correct.
Okay, yes. And you do that on a regular basis?
We did, we've done it at every meeting since I've been here for three years, so I'm sure they did it before that.
So that's why the bills in between number change from what's in their package, because that bill was paid last Friday. So what do you do when you have three people vote not to pay something? And you can't pay a bill without a majority?
Majority? You have a majority.
We have five and three.
It's five and three is what the vote just was.
I thought you had to have, you know, a bigger majority than that for money. I thought you had to have six to spend, or maybe wrong.
I think any action of the board is by majority of the board.
Some of it, some things take six.
Bonding type issues to, to go, bonding takes two-thirds vote. So yes, there are a few things that take more to...
I'll check one.
A simple majority.
Current claims, 381,490.54.
Did that change too?
No, it doesn't.
Well, we need to deduct something out because their bill is on that.
No, it's not.
Well, the paper I got is still on there.
Pro-bill is on there for materials.
Theirs wasn't on there?
Nope.
I'm pretty sure we discussed that last week.
I know we discussed it, but I thought it was on that.
To not be on there.
You guys didn't have that because you knew you was going to pay it before anyway, huh?
We didn't know that until we talked about it on Friday a little bit.
Well, you should've, because these were already printed up last week, so you should've known one way or another before we even did anything Friday.
So it is not added into these. It became a bill in between and not a current claim.
So the total amount is 381,490.54.
Correct.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any just further discussion?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. On the solar sound, first one right off the bat, on page one.
That's $370 is for our monthly contract with solar sound, and the rest of it was for the Cobra head lights out along the truck bypass in 385. The heads were loose and the bolts on the bottom of the poles were loose and cranked anchor bolts that they had to repair on the, on the heads to keep poles from falling over. And they charged labor along with the boom truck to make those repairs.
Well, when we have, when we pay a maintenance monthly bill, shouldn't that take care of the maintenance that goes along with?
I'd love to find another contractor that has a high enough boom truck that'd be willing to come to town and take that contract over, because we've had nothing but that left, in my opinion, for solar sound.
Is there any chance that we can put it out for bids again? And see if there is somebody else out there?
Sure can.
What's your contract then?
I'd have to pull that, I don't know that... We're attempting to get all the contracts, so they come due at the end of the year, so we know when contracts are up. Instead of every month having to figure out which contracts are coming due, we can, we're gradually switching them all to end on December 31st each year.
Well, I would like to see something concerning going up for bids on this maintenance activity on the next meeting if possible. And know when the end of the contract is. I think it's kind of silly that we pay $374 a month, every month and a half since I've been a member of the council, which is four times back. And now we get hit with a bill because they have to do some maintenance? I don't understand it.
I'll have public courts check into that.
Okay. Is that all right, Bud?
Yes, sir.
The other...
I thought that's on the agenda.
The other time I had, I have concern about is the page eight, third from the bottom, Wanted to know, is this the final payment to them?
No.
No?
No, that's just the progress payment.
Okay. So how many payments have we made to them? Have they been at us now for three months?
No.
I, I know there's, this is at least the second payment, and I think that's all they've gotten. There might've been three, but we can check that for sure too. They've been at it since just the week before Memorial Day.
Is Tracy going to be here, Ted?
No.
I had some phone calls before I came down here, nursing really upset people. We got a, they got a hole up there in front of, what's that, whatever the bill, that they dug and it's plum full of water corrupted the curb, and he's worried about it going out in the street. And when they leave, the whole street's going to cave in. The ditch is full of water, so they got a leak someplace up there.
Where is this at?
Just off.
There by Pasture Bend.
It's just off of Fourth, down that street coming up from Lenz.
If we think we got a leak, we should be calling the dispatch and getting our guys out and taking a look at it.
Well, it's been full of water for days. You supposedly have two water guys up there basically overseeing the project.
I don't remember since, I, my house is right there, the corner of Chapman Ford.
It's up the street from your house.
And I haven't seen it, I've been over there several times.
Guy that called me said it was. Tom Austin did call me.
And I know Tracy did get a call today to go check on a water situation over there, so that might mean where he was at in September.
He'd like to have his mom up to remain pretty soon, because she's dragging holes all over, because her sprinkler system don't work, and she's a little old, I think, so...
We had a chat about that today.
Any other...
That's all my questions.
Did you have discussion?
Yeah, the pump for Hot Springs, is that something that was on...
What page you on?
On page eight also. Temperature technology, it says. Do you drive for it? Do you drive for the pump company?
Yeah.
Something break there, or was...
Yes. We, we have alternating pumps for redundancies, so one pump runs, Tim might be able to explain a little better, and back and forth.
We have two pumps out there. One pumps once for so many hours and then it shuts off, and then the other pump kicks in, or one of them went bad, so they had to put a new shaft in it. It's just one of those things that after so many hours and hours, they break down.
So is this a new pump or just the shaft of, or repairs to the old pump?
I believe this was just repairs for shafts for the old pump, wasn't it?
It's $7,800, so that, that's a group, I think, I think they bought a whole new pump and they sent it in there.
I know they put at least one new pump out there, but one pump quit them. They've been, they actually run for a couple, two, three months with just one pump, but they were nursing it along until they got the second one put in there.
Yeah.
Actually, it's only you don't know where that place in Ohio, where you can't drink water.
Did you have those...
Toledo, Ohio.
Yeah. The other one was on materials for the plunge, I think that's on page 10. Is that one that had a hole in the floor, plumbing issues, or...
What item?
Let's see. In the middle of the page, 4515.
Pro-bill?
Pro-bill.
Yeah, pro-bill. Or 1163.
That's multiple bill stuff, yeah, that's multiple. We found a whole file worth of bid voices before the, or as the new manager took over, there was a whole file worth of things that hadn't been processed in Rapid City Hall, so...
Thanks.
Those things happen when new people take over.
Yeah, when someone's not overseeing them.
Do we have any more discussion on current claims? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion carried. Communications from the public. Are you Barb Klein?
I am.
You are on the agenda.
I hope so. It was a long drive there with all the motorcycles.
Did you want...
Yeah.
We have some in our packet from you, but...
How long do you want me to talk? Because I can be really long-winded, or I can be short.
Well, we'd like you to take, take what time you need, but don't make it over an hour.
Okay.
This is the second time, I think.
I was going to give you five minutes.
I like this idea.
No, I'm Barb Klein, the executive director of Prairie Hills Transit. Thank you so much for letting me be here tonight. We're just entering our 25th year of management of public transportation in western South Dakota. We began in Hot Springs probably 12 years ago at the request of the community, and took over the bus system that at that time was called the friendship bus. Why I'm here tonight is to ask for $10,000, which is, I think, $500 more than we requested last year, but those dollars are matched with federal dollars and an operating grant called 5311, and I won't bore you with all the nuances of the different grants that we get, but the 5311 grant is 50/50 operating dollars and 80/20 administrative dollars. The $10,000 is used to match those dollars to make sure that we're getting the federal dollars that we need to operate here. We also requested some funding for a bus. Now, you currently have two buses in, in Hot Springs. One is probably at about 150,000 miles, it's a 2003. And a factoid that all of you should know and spread widely, that in South Dakota, 95% of the fleet of all vehicles in South Dakota have exceeded useful life expectancy. That's a big deal. That means we've got a lot of old equipment that we're running, and a lot of the people that we provide service for are, I would call them fragile elderly, those folks with disabilities, school-aged children, meaning we provide transportation for them. So that would be the second thing that we're requesting funding for. The local...
Is that in addition to the $10,000?
It is. The local transportation board had met with Harley and, and that was before you came on with Don, but they're able to come up with a portion of the match for the vehicle. In addition to the number of miles that the vehicle has on it, we're finding that there are more and more individuals in Hot Springs that require wheelchair transportation. The bus that we have, and we use one at a time normally, you guys, unless we go out of town for major medical, but it will only take two wheelchairs at a time. We have as many as four people in wheelchairs requesting transportation at the same time. Some are to go to work, some are to go to dialysis, it's a variety of different reasons, but given the age of the vehicle, we chose to replace it with a vehicle that would have four securment stations. Everybody drove here tonight, maybe you don't understand the importance of having public transportation in the community, but for people that don't drive, it's a really big deal. We offer transportation five days a week. They're required to schedule their trips 24 hours in advance, or they can do a standing appointment, depending on their circumstances. It's a minimal cost. If you're over 60, it's a donation. If you're under 60, we charge $2 per one-way trip. What we're seeing is an increase in ridership in Hot Springs, actually, to the point that we feel like we need to hire a second part-time driver to keep up with the demands of the service here. And if you, around town, work buses with Blue Stripes, let's say Prairie Hills Transit. I guess I would open it to questions. I gave you a lot of facts here. Could I do five minutes?
You, you.
We gave you a lot of facts about ridership, the age of the riders, where they're going, the reasons that they're going different places. I think one of the best opportunities or options that we have for community members is that you're lucky to have a really nice healthcare facility here. It doesn't mean that they can still get all the healthcare things that they need. There's some major medical things that they need to go to Rapid City for, and we provide that service for them.
Does any...
What's the cost, or driver to ride to Rapid, or the person to ride to Rapid?
I would say $10 per one-way. $20 round trip.
I didn't do it with one of your drivers, it must be, so...
That's per person?
Per person. And you do have a pretty strong local board down here. I don't believe you've appointed city council representative on that at the current time, but we invite that, that participation. Harley comes to the meetings when he can. We've got a representative from the VA, Julie Hill, with H&R Block is on it. Morna Mallory with Black Hills Special Services, Walter, I don't remember Walter's...
Did you have a council representative before?
We did.
What was that?
We had Nancy, then we had Joe, and then...
You had Dave Burris.
Well, we didn't see Dave at any meeting, but he may have been on it. And I'm not being derogatory, I'm just saying...
I'm just saying, I just wondered if, no one here is saying that they were on that minute, so I'm just trying to figure out who was.
Yeah, and I think Don was going to visit with you about council representation. I mean, we meet once a month for about an hour at 9:30, it's on the 3rd Wednesday, and we don't meet every month. The big, the big thing in Hot Springs is that through the years, and it's been quite a few years, there's been an opportunity to have a vehicle storage building, a bus garage, if you will, and a couple different times it didn't go through. We had the money. Now we're still wanting to be in place, so we have a shovel-rudded project if it will...
Do you have a card, or can you call me at city hall, or...
Can.
Because I only gave you five minutes, so...
No, and I, I usually stop when I'm in town.
Yeah, I, I, unless someone else has more questions, we are going to be going into the 2015 budget discussions very soon, and, you know, it'll be up to the council to make a decision on how much we donate, or...
How many buses do you have?
Total, or just in Hot Springs?
What, you mean, put in coverage?
Oh, right now we have two vehicles in Hot Springs. We want to replace one, and I, I don't know if I would even suggest putting a third one here yet, but some days you do have both vehicles in operation. If the transportation needs continue to grow and the volume continues to grow, we'll be using both of the vehicles in town, so we would look at a third one.
I was just saying, we got a big armory up on the hill that's intended to be done someplace.
Remember, we got a lot of people looking to take, to take over that hill.
Yeah, but you know how many thousands of dollars it would cost those other people getting there?
Well, that's why I'd like you to give me all, and see what options we have.
I can give you heads up on coming in, maybe you can sit down.
That would be totally...
Okay. Thank you.
I got one. What do you attribute the $70,000 increase in workers' compensation to?
Can I be perfectly candid? Do you have a report here?
Yes, we do.
We've, we've had a couple really bad claims with Hot Springs drivers. And they drove it up. We went into the budget year not knowing we were going to get that kind of an increase. We do our budgets usually in January, July, it's a minimum to DOT, and it had already been approved when workers' comp came back to us and said, oh, by the way, instead of a $40,000 premium, you're going to have a $120,000 premium. And there was nothing that we could do about it. It's coming back down again, but for us, that was probably one of the most traumatic things that I've ever dealt with, because it's like that kind of shortfall that you don't have money budgeted for, and you know that the money's not going to be there to replace it, so...
Who actually screened your drivers? Who hires them?
We do. There's a very good procedure in place. They apply for the position, they are interviewed for the position. If they are chosen as a potential candidate for the position, they then have a owner-vehicle record check, a criminal background check, drug screen, and we're in a random pool, so routinely, depending on the draw, they are randomized as well. We do an extensive amount of training. We do about three days before anybody's ever quit in a bus. We have another three-day national certified course that we do with the drivers, usually within 90 to 120 days. And routinely, we go over all of the practices. If you've never been through workers' comp though, they don't really care. We showed them footage of what actually happened, because we have security cameras in all of our vehicles. We told them that the driver had been coached and actually written up because of poor improper use of wheelchair passengers, and we still paid the claim, so...
Well, having dealt with workers' comp, I don't think it's any different all over the nation. They never go down, they always go up, and it's always after to get your budget made. It always seems to happen that way.
And we, we went through several national insurance companies to have them try to help us, and they couldn't find anything wrong with anything that we were doing. It was just simply the insurance.
How many buses do you have altogether?
Probably about 42 right now. They range all the way from small minivans to ADA vans, cutaway buses. In our fleet, we have a pretty trolley, but we'll never put another one of those again, just in case you guys are interested, so...
So you got a garage, a $3 million garage, where is that?
It's actually four and a half million, in Spirit Beach. And it is an intermodal transit facility. We do the Jefferson Lines depot there, we have a licensed childcare center out of that, and we have a maintenance shop with three mechanics in it, where we do the majority of our maintenance, oil changes, brakes, rotors, all of those kinds of...
On all your buses, even the ones that are down here?
Yep. We, what we do is our mechanics will trade out vehicles, they'll bring you a replacement vehicle down here, so your days of service are not interrupted, they'll take them up there. And what we've found is even though we're taking business away from local companies that maybe could do it, there's a couple things there, because the size of the buses, they can't always get them into work on them, but we're finding that if our own mechanics are doing the PMs or the preventative maintenance routinely the same way all the time, we're having better, better luck with them. Okay, I'm going to go battle the motorcycles and things.
All right, thank you for coming down. Any other communications from the public?
I've got something. We can do that.
You can wait.
Of course, yeah.
There's some...
We got people over here at first, somebody in the audience.
Go ahead.
We got two people now.
I didn't see something, go ahead.
Okay. Some of you may know me, I'm Linda Varval, I'm personal representative of the Alfred Hatches State, and at the, at the July 7th meeting, you all voted to let us keep the garage as long as we had it painted and roofed by the end of July. I called city hall and talked to Mary on the 21st, and let her know that we were done with painting and roofing the garage up there. I don't know if anybody has had time to go up and look at it, or how you all feel about it, so...
I don't know if anybody has had time to go up and look at it, or how you all feel about it. So, and I didn't know what the next step was going to be, because you all had paperwork on a lien that was placed on the LLC, I believe. So I don't know what the next step is.
Sounds good.
Release the lien.
Release the lien. I don't know how we move on here.
We'll give them Carol and arrange that if the council's ready to do that. I'm not sure what kind of paperwork we'll need, but it'll come back before the council for final approval to release at some point here.
Yeah, we'll call it tomorrow.
And we will continue to maintain the lots up there with mowing and all that stuff. Okay? Do you all have any other questions?
I appreciate you calling, City Hall. I did get that message.
Did you?
And I do appreciate you following up on that.
All right, thank you.
You do have the property for sale?
No, I don't. Actually, the property, before my father passed away, he quick-claimed the property to Benny Gatch. And so that piece of property won't be for sale. There is other property out in the county that I have a bid on one, and the other one I don't.
Thank you for your patience. I thought the property was gonna be sold.
I'm not sure what...
And that was one of the reasons why leaving the garage down there for us...
Well, you know, Benny requested that the garage be left on there so that he could, like, put a riding lawnmower in there, and so that he wouldn't have to haul things back and forth from Edgemont every time that he came. And so, but what he plans on doing with the property, I don't know right now, so... Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have a... Did you wanna speak?
Speak, yes.
I'm not gonna...
You don't have to if you don't want to.
I thought you had your hand up, so if you didn't...
No, I was talking to a member of people about the water fill station.
What is your name, sir?
Dick O'Connor. I live at 238 South Twenty-second Street. Been there since nineteen seventy-five. I watched the growth of people hauling water to the outside of town. And it's dangerous with these trailers and pickups and so on, with tanks going by my place up to the water fill place. I was encouraged when I saw the council looking at removing it, and became very discouraged when it was decided to be where it's at. And it's a safety issue.
Do you have any recommendations?
I don't know what you all looked at. I've been talking to a number of council members. There was a lot of different discussion, a lot of different options, but the council couldn't agree upon it, so I don't really have a big suggestion. I just have a concern about my grandkids that play out on the streets. If somebody can train them better, I'll send them to them. People that live up the street from me have a couple of little girls that play out in the streets. And we already have enough traffic. It looks good where the station is at, because it's right by the bypass. Well, sure, everybody comes off the bypass and fills up, turns around, goes back to the bypass and goes home. That's not true. People come off the university. I don't know if it's feeding the north side of town, you know, a bar gal, or where they're coming that way for water. Why, I don't know, but they do. I've witnessed this for years. And we even had somebody filling their truck, a commercial truck, at a fire hydrant just down the street. You can find it at stop. But we continue to see heavy traffic that has no business in a residential area. I just wish the council reconsidered options for removing it from residential area. Where it's at right now, you've got the Grandview Trailer Co., and I know there's young kids running around up there, which is even closer than where I live, so that's my concern.
You had mentioned to me about stop signs.
Well, I don't know if that would work. We've had controversies over stop signs. And I've been reading, I just don't think that is the answer. I don't know what the answer is. If I had a answer, I'd submit it. I just... I thought it was all coming down here to the Mueller Center. Well, that was a dump station. That's fine, and then...
Rain.
It's not...
Water from above.
It's the dump station.
You know, I understand the problems, the situation, but I felt as a grandfather, if I didn't act, at least come down here and raise the question, if one of my little grandkids gets run over, I haven't done my job. Sure, they should not be in the street. Okay, I'm gonna be raising kids, try raising grandkids. But it's a safety concern. And I think we should all, you must have felt that, or you wouldn't be considering that one job, moving the fill station from where it's at. So, that's all I got.
Well, we talked about taking our residential from the get-go. I don't know. I think maybe we oughta look at the Murphy. I know there's a hill going in and out, but, you know, the trucks going down there all day long, sanding, they can sand that hill and people can get water down there.
I think the question is, are we gonna address new idea? I mean, they did vote on it the last week.
Can you have children at play signs and lower the speed on it? My dad hauls water out of there and has for years. And if you're gonna put that on a hill, have you ever hauled water?
Sure.
Okay. When you leave that fill station, and if you're going up the hill, you've always got water run off. You're gonna have to maintain that with ice in winter time, water running off, and constantly freezing over and over. You're gonna have an ice issue up the hill.
Yeah, he drives up hill all the way home, so I suppose he... I suppose he spills quite a bit of it.
Something one's pretty fine, if you're considering a straight uphill, we're creating an ice issue, but, you know, one of the suggestions could, you know, go have a play sign.
One of the reasons why I thought it was a good idea, since we have acquired the land down by the sewer plant, that we use that property. I'm only one councilman.
There's some legal issues with that.
All right, me.
I thought so, too.
What?
They say there are some legal issues in our room that we have down here. It isn't what it looks like. We're a lot closer to the road than, because of the core and the flood zone.
Well, one time, someone was gonna talk to some different property owners about maybe trading land, and I never did hear the outcome of any of that.
It was never pursued because we didn't have a definite yes or no if that would be a preferred location from the majority of everybody.
Well, not just one location. I mean, maybe, I guess maybe this council should've...
How long has that fill station been there, Dick? You know? A lot of years.
A lot of years. Of course, and people building out of town. You know, if you driven down Cascade Road in nineteen sixties, there was hardly anything out there. I mean, it's just continued to grow. I have no fault with that at all. People need water. I'm just concerned about one of my kids, grandkids darting out, you know? I don't know. I just felt I had to bring it before the council.
Maybe we can speak to our safety board, police council, and policemen, and see if there's some kind of legal signage or something that we could keep them water trucks off Twenty-second Street and have a designated route for them to get in and out.
Well, they have a, don't they have a large truck prohibited sign on University? But you still have semis coming down to University and then heading east to, they missed their truck bypass up there, and they're not paying attention to the sign.
Right. We could look at, we could address your issue with the police force and see, with our safety committee, and see if there's a signage that, or something we can do to route people so they don't come by here.
What happened to finding another location?
We looked at several. The one location that we thought really worked good, we had two people show up at the meeting, not in my backyard.
Which area?
What are we, a couple more?
Which area?
We receive more calls.
You know, I mean, we kicked this thing around for six, eight years, guys, and it just come back to that's a pretty good location for it, in my mind. You know, that old building, tear the old shop down. Actually, there's plans to even put in a small park there next to it, so those kids will have some stuff to do.
Kids might get some trucks. I thought there was discussion about making that old lot available for purchase. I thought it was going to be something sold as a residential site.
That was our goal when we originally started dealing with this.
All fences torn down, it was kinda cleaned up. And now we're gonna build a second station there?
No, the old station will be gone. There'll still be three lots for sale there when we're setting down the water station.
That lot that was in the process of being cleaned up, but it needs a little bit more work in there, but it's been, there were seven lots there total under the old plating that's been replatted into four lots, so the city would keep the one on the end where the building is now, the big building is now, and add into the lot, and the other three will be put up for sale after the water fill station was installed. Under the current plan, that was approved last meeting.
Do you really think anybody will ever buy a lot next to that?
We looked at a lot by the county shop. There's not enough pressure down there to run a water fill station out on Seventy-One, which would have been a joint project with the county, and we could have shared the cost on that, like we've done many other things. We looked at purchasing a lot right at the top of the street going down to the city shop, so you don't have the hill to pull. But that was a twenty-five thousand dollar purchase that the majority of the council wasn't too hept on. We did get the lot down that Carl was referring to, just a block or two up from ProBuild along Indianapolis or along the bypass. And, you know, you got a truck access just right off the bypass into that lot and back up, but then we had, that was residential area as well, but right next, or mixed use, I guess, is what we would have resolved it to allow for it to go in there. We looked at, there were two other spots we looked at, because I think there were seven of them.
By the sewer plant.
By the sewer plant was one of them.
Then we got the state issues for spilling chlorinated water possibly at the river. So you have one there.
Had to stay away from the river anywhere that we would put it, from overflow.
There was a spot looked at at the top of the bypass, kind of by Leo Moses, you know, place over there, but there's no water sewer infrastructure there.
I think his question was, do we want to say we're sticking with our decision last time, or are we willing to look at other options again? We need to give him an answer, I think. That's what he asked.
We can still explore the land trade deal if we wanted to explore that, but I, you know, wasn't getting a feeling that that would be accepted by a majority, and I didn't want to get anybody excited one way or the other.
I'd say the trade probably would be a lot more...
Did some be surprised? All those trade things, all the price goes up and down when you start trading?
Well, we know what that land was worth, so I mean, the trade would be more acceptable than offer in cash. I mean, we owned the land once, we gave it away.
I think what the gentleman is looking for is to put our vote that we had at the last meeting, set it aside, and keep working on it.
Basically, what we voted on at the last meeting was to go out to for bids. We did not actually vote to put it there. We just went out for bids to see where it had cost us to put it there, if I remember right.
Yeah, we voted on the location only.
Voted on the bid location only, not... So, if I remember right, is that correct?
I mean, there'll be a few more steps, because we gotta go out for bids and approve bids before the water station would actually go in there.
You know, we've got a lot of stuff we've gotta do, and we can, there may be such a thing that it's cost prohibitive to rebuild it there.
Have you ever talked to Steve about the other side of the road by the landfill, like I suggested that time? And trading for that property in Walker?
Above the Derby?
Yeah, right above the bleachers.
He didn't wanna part with that, so...
The mayor was doing the negotiations on all of those, or the discussion, I guess it was a negotiation, it's just the acquires.
Steve does have that big piece of property right there on University that he has a great big sign on.
He sold that, did he?
I don't, yeah, I don't.
Did he sell it?
Yeah, I think so.
I still think we need it on a flat area and out of residential.
I agree with Paul.
Who's got that line between the Forest Service Building and just above the fitness center behind?
Steve.
He's got that plot pocket?
Mr. Lindsey talked to me today. I don't know how serious he was about, he's got a lot behind his building that's reasonably flat. I don't know if he was real serious about it or not. We were briefly discussing it.
You have to make a loop through there.
I never really looked at the entrance or the exit, so I guess I don't know.
Yeah, it's, the bottom part of it's almost level with the bottom of the city's lot to the west.
Can I make a motion that we look for an alternate site again and try to not kill it?
It's gonna stay right where it's at for a long time, because it would never get decided till it makes a thing, guys.
We're not gonna look too hard. We're gonna figure out a safety.
Well, I'm open for looking at different areas. I mean, I, because I don't like it in residential area. I don't. I don't, I don't feel it's...
Do you have a motion? Are you...
I'd make a motion, I guess, that we...
You're making a motion.
Okay, I'd second it.
I'm sorry, you're making a motion on what?
I'm making a motion that...
On something that's not on the agenda.
That's, you're actually right.
I was gonna say that...
Pardon me?
It was approved for the location.
I don't think that necessarily means one.
I'd like for it to be on the agenda in two weeks.
I have no problem with moving this deal somewhere else, guys, but I think you just guaranteed that it's gonna stay right where it's at for the next five, six years. Because this thing's been on the books for ten years trying to move it, and nobody can find a spot, so maybe somebody will come up with a good spot.
Maybe we'll sell the dump station with the water.
It's too close to the river. So, can we give a motion in a second? To put it on the agenda. But we can't, to put it on the agenda. I don't think you need a motion.
There's a short plan, but it's on the agenda to...
Can you make a motion on Adam that's not on the agenda?
But I think I can request that it be on the agenda and without a motion. Okay. Everybody okay with that? All right, thank you.
What do you say?
She's gonna be on the agenda in two weeks. Thank you. Anybody else? Whoa, my God. Okay.
I just would like to thank the council for supporting and sponsoring the carnival that we had last weekend. I don't know how many of you or your grandkids attended the carnival, but I was there all three days. Thirty-two hours spent there helping the city recoup and sell tickets, where we came in just under ten thousand dollars. Thirty-two hours spent there helping the city recoup and sell tickets, where we came in just under ten thousand dollars, hardly as a figures.
Actually, it was ten thousand one hundred and ninety-seven, ninety-six dollars, so we did, we had one location that didn't have the money in.
Good, so even better. So, I would just like you to consider bringing it back again next year, I know they were happy and pleased and would be wanting to come back as well. So if you consider that in your budget as well, we'd like to look at wristbands next year. I do not want to. I think the wristbands would work much better, but.
Kind of makes the suggestion, I don't know, as far as your date that you chose for that, how did you feel?
I didn't choose the date.
I know.
You have to fit that in with their schedule and they travel from one location to another.
If you're gonna look at it, then can you give a different date?
I asked them what the date they would look at coming out this way and they said probably the same time. Because they're traveling to other locations that are already booked for the year. I mean, people book them way in advance.
Year after year.
What was the problem that you saw with the date?
I just felt like it was kind of a bad, when there's all the other activities going on in the rest of towns.
Such as Festergold Discovery Days?
And Lee Deadwood, also Days Seventy-Six. So everybody was gone, kind of, I know it's nice to bring back here, but I have to say, I think we would have a better turnout.
In the evenings, it was nice.
Oh, it was busy at night.
KOT, New Center One did excellent coverage on the events and actually, if you watch the news coverage or even go back and review them, we actually were the only ones in the community at that time, the Southern Hills having anything else going on. I mean, most people don't really come down from Lee for a carnival.
No, Gold Discovery Days is what I'm talking about. They had their activities going on.
The nights were rocking.
Night is normally a carnival business, it's not normally during the day, I mean, it's.
So what is, what was the total cost of the carnival?
They charged fifteen thousand.
So the city's picking up the difference. Four thousand eight hundred.
That got your kids out, off their cell phones, iPads, family activities, interacting with the families and having actual fun.
That's a good thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think we really need to recognize the effort, I mean, Kim really did put in, I think I was there four hours and we were swamped that whole four hours and Kim put in like thirty-two, like you said, so.
We did over six thousand, what was it, six thousand dollars in sales just in those three days?
Yeah, whereas the advanced ones. I know that night we brought in three thousand, just you and I that night, so.
So on that note, I would just like to ask also, when are they gonna be done with the construction up on our, on our street, Fourth Street?
Never.
I mean, it's getting to be ridiculous, is any, I mean.
There's still two people right next to you that's not hooked up to water yet.
We've had low water pressure forever and most days at noon, I go home and there's no water. So I mean, it's, it's just been a ongoing headache.
I asked Tracy and I says I wouldn't let them continue up on the hill until they're finished down there, but it does, so.
What are they doing, they seem to be backtracking, it's like they get past us, we're right at the top of university, they get past us, okay, down.
Getting ready for Hill to put asphalt down right now, because they're coming in this week to start patching the ditch.
Well, they dug that ditch up again today.
They're, they're borrowing from Fourth Street to Fifth Street to put the tie-ins, so they have isolation loops on the water system, so we have a water main break, we can just shut one block of people down and not have to shut four, five, six blocks of people down.
So right at the top of university is that where some of the main shut-off things are? That explains the three holes?
Well, it takes time and people need to be patient, but we need to get on and finish it.
Have they done appropriate, taken appropriate action to be ready for this asphalt? I mean, is there?
They're working on it today, they worked on it all day today.
You got a city engineer supposed to be overseeing all this, so.
But, you know, and I don't understand, evidently, we're not gonna make them do anything on the corner where they had their track hole.
Going to inspect that in the morning.
They already cut the street and took everything out.
Of where?
Up in Fourth Street.
Our new asphalt.
Our new asphalt that tore. Corner, new asphalt and the curb that they tore the heck out of, but they're supposed, somebody's supposed to replace them, they're not yet. But yeah, we're gonna put all these street, then we'll come back and do it.
Fourth and Jenny?
Way down in Washington.
Washington.
Way down in Washington, Fourth and Washington, the furthest end of the project.
Bid in street, have to turn.
Do you don't have water pressure now?
Oh, it's low.
My water pressure was nothing like this.
Nothing, nothing, I mean, I feel like it's coming out of a garden mower. I mean, I stay in my shower and it just. I go in the camp shower, you know, it's like squeezing a.
A little bucket.
I mean, it's, pressure's terrible.
Yeah, I can't run too rosy, and I used to, every year, Bill, this year.
I got the high efficiency washer and it would normally take me twelve minutes, a medium sized load, it's taking me half hour just because of the, I mean, it's double time, just because of the water pressure, I want to take just the washer fill up. It, it's not what it was.
Is that something that'll be fixed when they're complete, or?
I don't know.
I'm scheduled to meet with Tracy in the morning on several issues, so I'll add that one to the list.
Asking about those valves he was supposed to save, they're laying in the scrap pile right now, too.
They're, by the time that they get paid for all of that, those water lines should all be pressure tested and chlorinated tested and all of that stuff before they get paid for anything.
They did that the other day because they shut us down one whole day and pressurized the system.
Okay, but that, but then, when they're, before it's a complete job, they have to bring the pressure, the water pressure, not just the chlorine part of it, which is what they did for you the other day, but they're, they have to have a minimum pressure coming out of those hydrants, so your water pressure should come back before they get paid for anything. That's all I can guarantee is they're paid for it.
Put new pipe and sure to change your water pressure.
Oh, water pressure definitely, I mean, it's definitely noticeable, it's not.
What time are you meeting with Tracy in the morning?
First thing, eight-thirty.
Okay, so she could call City Hall ten o'clock and maybe you have an update?
Sure.
So you're not busy?
Well, yeah.
The bottom line is your pressure should not have changed.
You could talk to all the neighbors around there, I mean, everybody's complaining about the water pressure.
Yeah, something.
We get three foot walls.
I think.
Do you have a communication as well?
I have a question.
Yes.
Couple of questions, I guess. Over the years, I've watched contracted items, you know, like bids that are thousands and thousands of dollars and there are always change orders. And my understanding is that council has to approve change orders on contracts, and yet, when I look back, and this is kinda odd because it relates to something tonight, but when you look back at it, some of those bills for those change orders have been paid prior to the council approving the change order. And so I guess my questions are, what constitutes the change order? Who approves the change orders? And is it ever appropriate to pay for the change order prior to approval of that change order?
Well, I know we just did that, so.
Normally, change orders approved between the contractor and the person hiring them, you negotiate it, but normally, if you have a firm bid, you don't normally have change orders, that's just in my world, but.
Well, you, you can have things come up that require something.
You can, but.
Then that's when a change in a contract has to be approved by the people who approved the contract in the first place, that'd be against it. And I'm not trying to point things, I'm just saying, you're the, you're the authorizing agency, I think.
I think the way that is, and I'm not, although, because I'm.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm asking only questions.
I'm not real showing this, but I think the amount of the change order can only be a certain percentage of what the total bid was. And if, when those come up, if it's over that percentage, then it would have to come to like the council. If it's under that percentage, then I believe it can go through like earlier with the mayor. That's, is the way I understand it, but I couldn't.
Yeah, I just.
I may be.
The bids are usually done by quantities, footage of curb and gutter, tons of gravel, base course, et cetera, so that, you know, that it's monitored to get track of, you have an estimate, an engineer's estimate, when you go to bid, the contractor estimates, estimates what he's going to do. And if you get into a project and the asphalt, for instance, is a lot worse under the section of street than you thought, you might take out a little more asphalt, you wanna do the job properly and get the whole street fixed instead of having a strip of new asphalt going twelve foot wide down the center of the street, you got six foot on either side of it that's falling apart. You do a change order in order to go in and add the quantities. Based on the bid, you already know what the quantity amount is, so you have a dollar, an exact dollar amount of the new amount that was added. And the change orders do have to be approved by the council. You approve a bid at a certain dollar amount and it changes to that bid up or down. I mean, the last change order that we did two weeks ago for the Hills material, or maybe it was four weeks, two weeks ago, for the Hills material project that we, we had up on Almond Street, that was a change order decreasing the total amount of the project.
I guess the biggest part of that question was, should that bill ever be paid before it's approved by whoever has authority to say that's approved?
Well, putting that in context, that's what we did last Friday, was put it as a bill in between to go ahead and pay it. And then we just voted out.
Remember voted on to approve the change order.
I guess it wouldn't hurt to, I guess in my idea, like, it wouldn't hurt to we, to pay that until it's been approved.
That's true.
That's why you received free votes on the bills tonight, because you got at least two others that feel that same way.
And this was something that was in my mind for a long time, it wasn't just over that, but that's a really good example of that happening.
I think we're all gonna be more aware next time, so. Was that your only?
Thank you.
Oh, okay, you said you had a couple of things, so.
What was your name?
Lindsey Anderson.
Anderson, that's on contact, thanks.
Okay.
I had a constituent ask me about our clock down there by Little Depot. They felt very strong that I, you know, was kind of moving that thing along and we moved it down there and then we hired someone to fix it, well, now it's down again and what's been setting, so they were just kinda wondering if I dropped the ball or what was going on, and I said, I tell you, I don't know, I said, it was taken back down to be repaired.
Unrepairable, obsolete parts.
Well, I've heard that, but I.
That's not true, I talked to Steve last week and he thinks he found parts for it.
Well, according to the clock shop, and that's who I've been talking to, they said there are no parts available for it.
He went online and went for it.
And that's where I dropped the ball, I should have made sure.
He texted the one who said that the parts were obsolete and was looking at other options.
Maybe.
So he maybe found another option, but I don't think he found the same part.
I don't know, he just said last week he thinks he has the parts, he's found the parts.
We went as far as talking about putting battery operated heads just in the front of all four sides of that, just changing batteries whenever they went in.
Well, needless, I guess, or.
We can follow up with Steve.
I need to, I need to follow up on this deal, I guess, make sure we do something, because it's, it's just another thing that was never, ever finished, I mean.
I think it's time we look and get a different clock.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if I need to check into companies with other.
Many thousands of dollars in that clock and still.
Well, but part of that problem was, you know, I'm not even getting that. You gotta hire competent people. My turn?
I think so, you're patient?
Yes, the gate at Oxford Canyon, did you guys figure anything out today early on?
Mayor talked with the attorney on that this afternoon.
Yeah, what's she say?
Uh, it's waiting on Anderson, it's waiting on Anderson to complete the drawings for the easements to be completed. So right now, there are no easements one way or the other for, there's been no change in the use of the land since. Until we get those easements completed. The attorney was calling Anderson this afternoon when she left the mayor's office.
So nobody's crossing ours until we have easements cross theirs. Am I correct in that?
If you wanna prevent that from happening, go put a chain with a city lock on it around it, then you can prevent that from happening. It is locked right now by the owner at the bottom of the hill.
Okay.
Okay, any other communications from the public? All right, move on to personnel. No comments, all right, we'll go to ordinances, second reading, Greg, of the weed, I'm sorry, grass and weed enforcement?
I make a motion, we accept it.
Second. All in favor, say yes.
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 No.
No.
Opposed, say no.
No.
You gotta ask both ways to do that.
I think I just did. Those opposed, say no.
Wasn't this a public hearing? Second reading?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just wondered, that wasn't asked, is all.
I knew you had two questions.
No, no.
So how did that, Debbie, what, what did you document?
Um, two no's and.
Six yeses.
Hope you're planning to budget to make that so the city can handle that.
Well, they have to cut it anyway, we have to, it was twelve inches, you know, it just went down eight, that's only four more inches that have to cut off.
It also eliminated the large lot deal, so all lots have to be mowed from curb to curb, not just the twelve foot down around the edges of the lot, around the outside edges.
I know I got a big lot I'm ordering every week.
All right. Second reading, ordinance, eleven forty-six, did you ask, I'm sorry, did you ask, he had a comment or something for this, since this was the second?
It's already been voted on.
We, you'd come in afterwards?
Nope.
You get a motion, you get a second, you get discussion, then you vote.
Okay, so there was no discussion before the vote? So I didn't say motion carried.
And you need to ask for discussion.
Discussions before the vote. All right. All right, the next one, second reading, administrative plan and zoning, in discussion.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna go back to my original deal, I, I just don't, I think it should be made up of members from Hot Springs. I just, I have a problem with, you know, I, I guess if they were non, if you, if it was worded where they were non-voting members from Fall River County would be one thing, but if, if we're not gonna word it that way, I guess I, I don't feel it's right to allow.
So we're gonna have, the majority of the people are gonna be from Hot Springs, so we're gonna have two people outside the city on the commission, and it can get, how many more?
Could be between five and eight. The majority has to be from the city.
And we have the majority at this point in time.
The ones not from the town have to be property owners in the city.
They have to live in Fall River County, no matter what.
But they also have to own.
Property in Hot Springs.
Yeah, all members shall be residents of Fall River County with ownership of real property within the city of Hot Springs. I'll make motion every week, accept the second reading.
That's second, or had we already done that?
No.
All in favor, so.
All in.
Discussions?
Wait, again?
Discussions?
Discussion.
Okay. I, I guess I have a problem with non-city residents being able to have a vote on the zoning and planning within the city limits.
I do too.
That's, that's the job of the city residents. And I guess I agree with Wes, I mean, to have input from outside is fine. There are public meetings, people from outside can come in and have input. But this is Hot Springs. This is our government, and it's our zoning and our planning. It's not somebody's from outside the city limits. That would be similar to asking someone from China to have a vote in the senate. And I don't believe it's right.
They have property they own. It's not like.
They may have property they own other places too, but they don't have votes there on, and can be members of governing boards. They pay their taxes, they get benefits from the community, just like, I don't live in the city. We have property here, but I don't expect to ever vote for the mayor because I live outside the city.
That's true.
And that's not my place to do so.
I think we have a lot of knowledge that we get, some people that have the opportunity to contribute to the.
Input is great, but.
And be that, you know, as far as having a vote, I guess is what you're saying, but.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
The city does control currently one mile outside the city limits with all zoning regulations, so any plats that are brought that fall within the one mile zone, and state statute allows the city to go up to three miles, and currently, Hot Springs has chosen to be just one mile outside.
I believe the layout has to be contiguous to current property, correct? You can't just go one mile away.
You, you can't.
No, it has to be continuous.
I spent years working the easements.
I just read it in our planning and zoning thing. It has to be continuous to our property. We could have an attorney confer, confer if you like.
What I don't understand is, people moved out of town because they didn't want to have to deal with our planning and zoning.
I don't think we're speaking of specific people in.
Oh, yeah, we are.
People out of town, yeah, there are people. I'm not saying names, I'm just saying people that chose to live out of town, is what I'm saying. Because they didn't want to put up with our planning and zoning, or they had stayed in town.
Maybe it's for something other than that.
Yeah, more for you?
I guess I don't know that well, they're saying.
Yeah, I don't think we can speculate on that.
That's just my feeling.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no.
No.
Here we got Wes, how many no's?
I'm a no. Three no's. Right? Motion carried. New business, travel for the building inspector to appear on August thirteenth and fourteenth.
Motion to approve?
No second.
In discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to say a few words. You know, we're, we're getting right back to this communist situation, is what he's trying to do, is he wants to approve, or get approval and have the state basically, legislature try to make a review on a vacant building on Main Street, which I don't like them either. I, I'd like to see them filled with businesses, but when you go and you try to change law to add new taxes to somebody just to try to deter them, I mean, that, that's not, I just don't see how it can be conducive to, to get anybody to do anything. You know, we, we passed a deal with this water, the water, what's it called, the water.
Building houses that have a main that goes in.
Availability fee.
Availability fee.
Availability.
To date, that has not deterred one person. Alls it did was, basically, it, it put an unfair bill on them. And I, I think that's exactly what this deal here is, he's, he's gonna try to do with this. I, like I said, I don't like seeing these vacant buildings on Main Street, I don't. But when you start targeting people and try to raise their taxes just because you don't like the fact that they own a building on Main Street and they're not doing anything with it, you're, you're resorting to, to being a communist, I mean.
I, I had a question concerning the historical buildings downtown with the inspections that have been going on and stuff. How many buildings will we be allowed to lose before we also lose our historical preference of the certain areas of the town?
Well, my thing is, you know, what, what is the next step? If, if we tax them out and we condemn these properties and we start tearing them all down, you start, at least you're, you're receiving property tax at this point. You start condemning these buildings, tearing them down, you're gonna get nothing. This is not like it's something new in America. Every small town in America is faced with this problem, but no one else chooses to go this route. And for some reason, Hot Springs, we just, we, we deter anyone from, I guess, staying here. And other people see it as we're, we're gonna make it better, and I, I don't, maybe someone can explain this to me. How is punishing someone gonna make it better?
Maybe you need to elaborate a little bit on how his idea was. Just like he said, there was a certain amount, I think it was three hundred dollars per thousand, isn't that what he said to us?
You're still gonna raise, you're gonna try to put a special tax on them, or a special.
The idea was to incorporate some of the cost to maintain it, or take care of an empty building, or if we have to tear it down or whatever, then the cost of taking care of it by the city.
You already have a process to condemn the building.
We don't have one that reimburses us.
You're never gonna raise enough money by this.
That's true, but the idea is to encourage people.
This wasn't for condemn, but to.
Well, that's what your final step is, if they don't pay the tax, and it becomes dilapidated, you condemn it, you tear it down, and the burden is shifted to the taxpayer. Because ultimately, the taxpayer pays our budget for the year, and that's where that money comes from to do these things. That's the fact, I mean, property taxes and sales tax, that's where you get your budget from.
It was to encourage people to actually keep buildings from being vacant. That was his goal.
Yeah, that was his goal on, on several things, was to make.
Wes, I thought it was just for condemn buildings.
Any, any vacant building.
The way he understood.
No, 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 any vacant building, he didn't say anything about condemned.
He's right.
What's that?
It is vacant, like the one right next to City Hall, that people are, they're just hanging on to it and doing nothing.
Like a bakery, it's empty?
I see.
Well, they're a motivator.
Yeah.
It's a motivator to get them to eat, you know, to move forward or sell. This is intent.
Is this, did you all probably discuss this Friday, and I wasn't at your special meeting? I'm not sure what, is he's going specifically for one law?
Yes.
No. No, he's on the policy committee for the South Dakota Municipal League.
But he told us specifically, he wanted to be there to pitch this idea to the municipal league.
Well, he's taken his idea to the municipal league's policy committee, but he is on that policy committee, and any of you are welcome to serve on any of the policy committees with the municipal league as well.
And what is his idea?
It'll, it'll deter these people from leaving a vacant building, they'll either have to sell it, redo it.
It's a tax on vacant buildings, is that what it is? Is that what you're saying?
New tax on vacant buildings.
Higher tax.
If nothing is done within a certain period of time, and then with an increase, if more time passes.
So then what's next, houses? If we see vacant houses we don't like, we're gonna raise their taxes, deter them?
We ain't doing nothing.
Hmm?
This is, this is pie in the sky.
This is a request to travel.
That he's talking about, it's going to the municipal league.
I realize that.
What the municipal league says doesn't mean nothing, because it all has to go through the state.
I understand that.
So you're talking years down the road.
And I'm talking now. I don't, I don't like it, so, I have my opinion, just like you do.
His purpose is to be part of this committee, to travel, to be part of the committee, so this, this request is for him to travel to appear.
Do we have a motion and a second on passing this?
No.
Travels.
Oh, do we?
Yes.
It's a travel request.
And to my knowledge, our travel request is revoked, correct? We have no money left budgeted for any more travel. We budget for twenty-four council meetings a year, we're, we're already, we're gonna exceed that already.
Is this within his budget?
Yes.
This is part of his budget?
It's part of the building inspector's budget.
How much travel does he have to do in budget?
I didn't look at that today.
So you don't know for sure? You're just saying.
If he goes over his travel budget, he has to cut something else out, because he has to stay within the bottom line of the, of the department's budget.
Did I get a?
You got a motion and a second.
All right.
And more to say.
Those in favor, say yes.
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 Those opposed, say no.
No.
Motion carried. Okay, employee benefits, plunge and golf memberships?
That would be neat.
Yes, it would.
I couldn't have a plan here. Tell me what you think, you, you want the cops to have a membership at the plunge so they can exercise and work out, and their family to go with them? Why don't we, seems how we give the fire department thousands of dollars a year, we make a deal with the fire department, let them go over there and work out with their weights and stuff, that way, like he said, you know, the free memberships, he don't think it's a good idea, and he's manager, so they can go over at the fire hall and work out and step the bump. That way we won't have to give free memberships to everybody, because I do not agree with giving free membership to the police department, their family, nobody, no other type of city employee in Hot Springs. So, that, that's something else that we could consider, instead of giving them all free memberships.
We could just make that part of the contract of fire department. And I've been told that some of the police officers already go over there and work out, so.
You could, they could still do that. The idea was to encourage our benefits for our police department and for.
But only the police department.
No, this was, does not say that.
It says all, it just says employees. The agenda item is employee benefits. Let's stick to the agenda.
Are we gonna give everybody free golf memberships now?
Right now, it's half price for all members.
Well, yeah, except if you work there, it's free.
And the same is for the plunge, which most people.
But is it gonna be half price for them to go to the plunge, or is that gonna be free for other members, other employees?
I think that's what we're talking about right now.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
We, we looked at doing benefits for our employees.
Okay, I'm asking, are they gonna give them golf free?
And I asked Harvard, do we have, as far as I know, it's a benefit, you have taxed your benefits, is that true?
Benefits need to be taxed if they qualify for benefits.
And the goal of this was to have a health and wellness program for our employees.
Under, under the insurance provisions of our current personnel policy.
And for the plunge, we've got, I don't know how many people down there now, employees that get free membership, I mean, do you know?
Off the top of my head?
Yeah, that'd be all.
Twenty, twenty-five.
Okay. And we have a total of thirty-eight employees?
That's, that's full-time, but during the summer, we're upwards of eighty-four, eighty-four employees with all of our summer help.
No, but this is going to be full-time equivalents only.
Well, then that means the plunge people can't have free memberships, but mostly part-time people.
But they have to be in there to exercise and do their swimming to keep.
And there is a requirement, you have to work sixteen hours a week in order to have a membership for yourself in twenty-four hours to have a membership.
But they're still part-time. They get laid off in winter time or go back school.
Um, something to do.
So they're part-time employees, and they just said, no part-time employees get this.
Basically, if they're down there working and doing that, they need to be in the water. And to me.
No, they don't, Georgia. I was a lifeguard for years, and I didn't want to down there every day swimming.
No, but they can go in and swim anytime.
Well, then you need to make it for everybody, not just the full-time.
And that's what the agenda items. If you just listen a minute, some, I just know from past experience, I know my son worked down there, and they got a card that said, free pass, free pass, whatever. And I, I really believe the people that work down there need to be able to go down and swim whenever they want to swim, or exercise or whatever. I would like to see all of our employees be able to have the opportunity to go to the plunge or the golf course to exercise and do health and wellness activities, and I, I would like to make a motion that our full-time employees and any of our plunge employees have the opportunity to take full advantage of that, so everyone has an equal opportunity for health and wellness.
Well, how about the kids in Hot Springs, you know?
And, and just a minute, Craig, Wes, the, the difference that I see here is, our plunge is open, full-time, our golf course, it doesn't cost anymore, of course, to mow or maintain or do any of that, if they want to rent a cart, that's up to them. But we pay for all of those things right now, and it doesn't cost us anymore to do those things. But it does cost us when we have our employees out with health issues, so I would like to see us be able to do that for our employees.
Well, I'm asking a question. You want to give the part-time people at the plunge free, free memberships? The part-time people at golf courses free memberships, but the rest of the part-time people don't get it? Just those two?
I, I have a little bit of a definition here. Okay, what you're calling part-time employees are probably working between thirty, forty hours during the time, the season that they are working, so actually, they're working the equivalent of full-time. So you're calling them part-time because they don't work year-round, but.
That's what they're part-time.
They're temporary.
They're part-time.
They're full-time temporary if they're.
No, they're permanent, permanent part-time if they get laid off in the winter time.
That wouldn't be permanent.
If they come back every year, it's permanent part-time.
The employees are full-time temporary.
For the season.
If they're seasonal employees.
So that means everybody can go. Yes?
Yes.
Every city employee.
That's what George is trying to say.
Full-time temp, I would say yes, they have the opportunity to.
That's everybody that works for a city in Hot Springs.
Yes.
Basically, I think if this is a benefit, this is something that has to be discussed during budget time, because by labeling it a benefit, there's a cost to it.
And, and that's what I.
And I think it should be considered on a department. Each one of those departments, when it comes up time for them to fill out their budgets, that the cost should be, I don't care if we own it or we don't own it, it don't make no difference, there's still gonna be a cost. We're either taking money in or we're not.
That's right.
If we're not, we're not making nothing. If we're giving it away, I don't care if it's employees or the guy on the street.
Did you have the opportunity?
But if you call it a benefit, it's gotta be a budgeted item.
Did you have the opportunity to look at how many we do have right now?
How many what?
Of employees that might have full-time memberships down there?
How many full-time employees do I have?
How many full-time memberships, or full memberships do you have?
How many employees have a membership at the plunge, is what she's trying to ask?
All of them.
Because all of them work over sixteen hours.
No.
How many city employees? Me, Debbie, oh, librarians, police department, no, I didn't, I wasn't asked to. Do you want me, is that something you want me to do?
That's what I was asking you, if I, if you could find that out.
Oh, okay.
That, that's all.
You may not know who city employees are. I mean, I think we need to give them a list.
And I didn't catch that note, I apologize.
You did, okay.
I'd make a motion, we table this thing, till you got a little better idea for these people, because at this point, you have no idea how many people you're talking about, and I, I have a hard time going along with this. When these kids in Hot Springs came and afford to go to it, but you want to give it to every city employee, but you don't, hold on, Georgia, I'll let you speak. You, you won't even think about lowering the price for the kids in Hot Springs.
We have, we have.
Hold on. You need a better grasp on this, because you, you just, you want to give everything away all the time.
Ask Craig, he wants to also. I'm sorry.
You were supposed to put that on the agenda. It was supposed to be with this and.
The personnel policies. The personnel policies.
I thought we talked about people.
And the reason this all came out was because of the issue of just a certain group receiving this benefit.
He made a motion to table it, I made a second. All right, I don't know where we. All in favor say yes.
There was a motion without a second by Georgia.
Yep.
There was a motion by Georgia, there no one said.
Yes, I made a motion that the full-time slash ten.
Yeah.
Would have the benefits.
I agree with Tim, this should be a budget item. We should talk about this during the budget.
So there's currently no motion because they didn't receive a second to table, so there's no action on the, on the item at this point.
Okay, so it fails.
Can I ask one quick question real fast? How much do kids in Hot Springs pay for something like that? You said you lowered it, how much do they pay?
It's been lowered by twenty-five percent to the kids. And they can buy the tickets and whatever, three dollars, three and a quarter, something like that, if they wanna give a punch ticket.
I'd make a motion that we table this until after the original meeting.
Well, you don't have a motion to ta, there's no, nothing to table, so there's no action.
The motion failed, so we don't have to.
So it's no action?
No action.
All right, it is for Alley Millings, Dwight?
Ms. Mayor, you got some other questions?
I'm sorry, um, not to go back to the issue we got rid of. Um, so for further information, what information do you want me to collect to help you guys with that?
Just, what, how many people right now do you have that are employees that have a full-time membership down there and then we can get it from the golf course too?
Okay.
Edora will get you a list of the employees and you can see if they're members or not, is how we'll handle that.
All right, thank you.
We good? Okay.
I'd, I'd kinda like to know how, you know, until this issue came up, I didn't know people is getting free admission to the plunge. Did it work out? No.
I tried to tell you that once before and you didn't listen. I said it goes on with the golf course and at the plunge right now.
Well, I know it wasn't golf course, but I didn't.
I know it wasn't the golf course too, but I guess I didn't realize that it was.
Well, she tried telling you, you just didn't pay attention.
Well, I must have been saying part of you were asking.
Any other discussion on that? Dwight?
I'll make the motion, we got some bids for some millings in our alleys behind our businesses.
I'll second it.
South Chicago.
Any discussion?
Now, we are talking about the specifics that are on this list.
Yeah, the alleys are behind Rick's Auto, uh, by KSK Antiques, behind the Credit Union, east and west by the post office, east and west by Barnes Apartments, north and south from Simcoe to Ace Hardware, east, north, south, top half behind Wells Fargo, uh, alley, east to west between fourth and fifth, between third and fourth at two thirty-seven North Fourth, and the last one, we're not doing.
Right now.
Dwight? That one from north and south from Simcoe to Ace, is that that whole alley behind Ace or do they stop and at a?
You mean right, directly behind Ace?
Or they can do the whole alley?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
That was what I kept understanding.
Dwight, I've received actually a formal letter from people who live on Valley View that they really would like some attention quickly up there as well. I know they're considered a street, but, um, I think Billy described it to me as millings that have been oiled and rolled and, you know, so it's not really asphalt there. So, um, you know, they would like us to consider them as part of.
This bid?
Um, activity this year.
And that comes under the street stuff?
Well, but they're actually an asphalt street.
Well, there are other pieces of roads that aren't considered streets too.
I know, I'm just bringing up that I did receive a formal letter from people who lived on Valley View that they would really like us to seriously consider, um, improving their road, they had lots of data about, they haven't had anything done for ten years.
But we're not doing roads, we're doing alleys.
The only problem with Valley View is they put that down with oil. That's why their blade won't, won't do nothing to it. So if we grind it up and just put millings on there, they're gonna wash off. And they wash out my alley, they ain't gonna stay on their road.
Yeah, they're gonna have the same problem they had here before, they put the fillings to fillings on it they've got on there now, is that road washed?
We'll have to re-apply it if we do this.
We'd have to mix it with oil, just like this.
Personally, I think Valley View, if we're gonna do something there, we do a curb gutter, storm drains and do the thing right. Because just keep throwing millings on, it's not the answer, guys, that's too steep of a hill. There might have to be some street assessment on that too.
Yep. Yep, that should be a full district up there.
This is it, 'cause that's the main problem, the hill. Move the hill.
I don't know who owns that, I think them lots of them were.
Did I?
I don't know for sure.
Got a question up there.
Doesn't your ordinance require the streets have curb gutters before they're annexed?
Normally, it's supposed to.
Normally, yeah, but.
I didn't thi, I didn't remember that changing.
It was a long time ago, Valley View come in, I think.
Yeah, that was, it was, it was before it was ever annexed down.
Okay, sorry to distract from alleys, but I just wanted you to know that I, I did receive a very concerning letter.
We could bid one street and see what it will cost with the option of not doing it, guys, we always got that option. I know people don't like that, the bidders don't like that.
The only, the only problem is putting it back down, we're gonna have to get oil and put it back down whichever it wants to down there.
We specifically say Valley View needs to be applicated and, and let somebody else do that because we don't have the equipment to have.
There you go. So what's been the cost?
I, I could go along with that and that would give us kind of a cost estimate of what if the cost.
Ideally, you would chip seal that, basically, you put kind of a blotter to it on top that once you mill it up. You would blotter it.
Why couldn't we do that now? Is it, is the road that bad? Could we chip seal it now? Because we're gonna chip seal some other streets in town.
The, the running, the street department wants to put culverts in there to help with the drainage issue, so there's going to be four culverts, uh, going across that road to keep the water out of the areas where it's currently going because that's one of the twelve drainage areas.
Well, then I'd say we better not do anything with the road until we get the utility work done first.
Okay, any more discussion on alley?
Does everybody wanna bid one street just to see a little cost?
We can bid it, like you said, we don't have to do that and.
Current motion was on the alleys. You can change your motion or have a separate motion for that.
You wanna change your motion?
I'll change the motion to conclude Valley View Drive. Drive's the one going up the hill, I think it is? There's Valley View Circle and Valley View Drive.
Circle must be up on top.
Is that down below where the trailer's at?
That's down below, it's the first turn off to the right.
Which one's to the right? Circle, thank you.
Valley View Drive is the one that goes all the way to the top of the alley.
Drive close to a couple of. So what's the motion?
I'm changing the motion to do the alleys I named.
Okay.
And Valley View Drive, uh, full depth milling with application on Valley View Drive. Application of compaction on Valley View Drive. And the alleys, the city crews can come behind and do the work behind the milling on the, on the alleys. That make sense?
Yep.
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
All right, any further discussion?
The other streets that are listed on the sheet then are, we're just, you're gonna disregard it.
For right now.
Sure.
At this time.
They're still on our list, but something we're gonna have to.
Yep.
If, if you mill it, you have to come back with asphalt on an asphalt street and they don't wanna do asphalt that late in the year if we do it this fall.
And we wanna kind of see what that's gonna cost before we jump off the side of the cliff.
So we're all clear on the motion?
We're just going out for bids.
Yep.
All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed say no? All right. Motion carried, please. Planet sulfur springs addition. I did get the Mylar.
Yes.
Notable on, it's not that fun. We talked about it on Friday. Do you wanna see it?
I'm gonna, oh. Um, I had, Darla Stevens brought this in and she said the taxes were paid by Overletner and it is ready to be approved and we just need to sign it and zoning and zoning had looked at it and then we were the ones that got the knowledge.
Okay.
I'll make the motion approve.
And I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed say no? Motion carried? Thank you. We're still kinda getting going with the new committees, but many reports, um, Carl, you wanna?
Uh, we didn't have a meeting, uh, since the last one. Our next meeting is August sixth at two P M, City Hall.
August sixth?
Isn't that six?
No, it's the next week after.
It's the week after then, at seven, thirteen.
Yeah, thirteen, okay.
Thank you. Um, Dwight, you, you already kinda talked about it. To your meeting?
About all we did was talk about the millings for the streets, I'm looking for my military, I can't find it. It was a pretty short meeting, so we can leave it at that.
Okay. And we made progress there. Um, the, the new committee code ordinances, Craig?
Hi, hi, I haven't had a meeting yet, but Wes is gonna let me know when he can meet and it'll be next week sometime, but I don't have the time yet. I'll let you know.
Well, and at some point, if, if you guys have a regular schedule, I'd just like to be able to put it out there so people know when you're meeting.
Yeah.
If they wanna come in. Basically, the public works hasn't changed, has it?
Public work stays the same and admin and promotion stays the same with the same.
It's just admin now.
Excuse me, admin committee, no promotion.
Well, I wanna keep that parks the same too, just to kinda keep it consistent because people got used to the, that Wednesday right after the others.
And is that okay with you?
It is, we'll discuss that earlier.
All right, go.
What time are you?
Three o'clock.
Through, three o'clock on that.
Wednesday.
That middle Wednesday on the thirteenth.
Wednesday previous to the second council meeting.
So you'll let us all know about code ordinances?
Yeah, as soon as you let us know what's convenient for anyone to get off.
All right.
Wes, we need to move beautification in between parks and rec so we can call it the PBR Committee.
We're already calling it PBR behind your back, just so you know. The funner, the funner committee.
I'm a thud man.
Yeah, no, I'll work on the acronym.
I'll explain something.
Public safety will be a once-a-month meeting with the police department?
At the same time, but location is the police department and not City Hall.
It's gonna be that Monday.
That Monday of that middle week period.
Is there a big enough meeting room in there if anyone has?
They can do up to ten, around ten, so I.
Yeah, that's as big as our.
And that's the first Monday?
That's the second Monday.
Second Monday?
This is the first.
The eleventh, yep.
At nine o'clock.
All right. And then the, uh, instead of promotions, part of admin, there's an enterprise advocate committee that Georgia has agreed to be the chair.
Yeah, and, and I talked with each one of the departments and we're going to try meeting separately just to see how things go for right now, but, uh, the plunge is gonna meet the last Wednesday at one, golf course is the last Wednesday at nine, uh, I don't have the Mueller Center yet, library is last Wednesday at four, and the airport is the last Friday at eight.
Great, thank you.
I have one thing I wanna add.
Okay.
On, on her committee and it doesn't have anything to do with that, but I need to request that at the next meeting, the two thousand and twelve audit comments, they're gonna be in the paper tomorrow and that we address them and this is at their request of legislative audit. Important, if you wanna verify, you can call them. But he said it should be addressed in open council.
The issues?
The comments.
The comments, yeah. And are you proposing that in the next council meeting?
I, I want that to be on the agenda on the next Monday, the next Monday meeting, whatever that date would be. What would that be, Harley?
That'd be two weeks from now.
Two weeks from today.
So the next?
The next city council meeting, eighteen.
City council meeting, Monday, on the eighteen.
Be the eighteen.
Yeah.
And that was concerning, what?
It's the comments from on our auditor that were part of the two thousand and twelve audit. By law, they have to be published in the newspaper, they'll be in tomorrow.
Okay.
In the legal. Thank you, Harley.
Yeah, pretty.
And, and they were referenced at the last council meeting when you accepted the audit proposal at the last council meeting?
No, we didn't discuss them. Right? They weren't discussed, we just accepted that legislative audit told them they had the audit, right?
Yes.
They received.
And that it needed to be, needed to be presented to the city council and that's what we did at the last council meeting.
Right.
And your request is for a discussion on the comments at the next city council meeting, two weeks from now? All right. Any other committee?
Can I talk about my committee meeting, I guess?
Yes.
We met with, uh, Matt and his wife and they, uh, presented us kind of with a summary of their survey and they're, they're making good headway on this thing and surely they're gonna give us the, uh, the overall planning that they've come up with so far, but some of the things that, and then the questions and answers that they received, the unanimous shortfall of our park system is the bathrooms and restrooms. I really don't think it came as a surprise to anyone, but, uh, I guess we're still talking about this Brookside Park and, uh, I hope we get some donors to step up and wanna cut a check.
In, in the email today, we did receive their budget input and, um, I actually already forwarded that on to the Elks because they have, um, you know, per Gerald Cogan, he gave me those letters at your meeting, um, they do have money that they put aside years ago that we never have, uh, decided on a project for. So I forwarded the, uh, report that we got from Tanya and Matt today to them to let them either pick or we decide what we, we agreed to fund in our budget sessions coming up that we'll talk about real soon here. And, um, I just wanted you to know, I followed up on that and they're looking at the report that came out today.
Think they want a basketball court?
I thought that's what Gerald was saying.
Their, their initial focus is on, um, like what Wes said and also on safety issues.
I, I thought he said that, that was in that paperwork again, that they wanted a basketball court about.
Oh, the Elks, that's what they want, their money.
Oh, the Elks, oh. Um, I think they're open to new possibilities, um, because I had told them, you know, that Wes is, has a consultant and we just got a report conveniently when I got the call from the Elks, so, um, they're aware of our prior, or at least the perceived priorities from Tallgrass and, um.
I think once we get this overall planning deal kinda wrapped up, we, we do need to get serious about, uh, parks, you know, rec committee something, I mean, we're gonna have to put something together, but I, I'd like to get some of their stuff done first before we start trying to go out and do stuff, before they kinda tell us what we really should be focusing on.
Does Matt plan on still having a couple more meetings for input?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause he was gonna let me know when he was gonna do.
Actually, I don't know about input, but I can tell you have some concerns, I guess.
Well, he, when, when they had a meeting down here, he says we'll have a couple more.
Well, we've been having, you know, at this parks and rec meeting, he stops and kinda does a presentation, gets us up to, and he's gonna have some more, so I can sure tell him to.
And he said he was going to, to have a couple more meetings for public input and And he said he was going to have a couple more meetings for public input and gear one of them towards kids.
He already had that.
And he didn't like doing that, did he?
No.
Deanne, didn't you say that there's one next Wednesday?
Wes?
At 3:00, the 13th.
Here?
City Hall.
With Matt or?
I don't know about that.
We're talking about the Parks Plan.
What meeting are you at?
My meeting that we were getting together with.
No, that's...
Is it next Wednesday?
Oh, yes, it would be next Wednesday, yes, at our Parks Plan. I think Matt, I think he was planning on coming down, and I'm not sure, I guess.
Okay.
We're gonna have, we're gonna have an actual scheduled Parks meeting, for sure.
He's talking about the with the public.
I was talking about public input, I put that out here. He told me that he planned on doing a couple more of those, because the process went wrong, and I just haven't heard anything.
And you went up to the elementary.
And they did one with the kids, they got like 84 kids in the mail, I can't remember the number.
They done it during one of the lunch deals at the...
So they did a second one with the kids, so it was all younger input, and then they also twice sat up at the, set up booths for taking public input at the Arts and Crafts.
Oh, that's...
And one other, one other one that he did somewhere, I can't remember where he said. So they've done four public gathering, information gathering sessions, and this is the result of what they found.
We're still talking Parks here?
Yes.
Is anybody, you know, with the Rotary Club's gonna do the bathroom already?
I don't know. I know we were waiting for the sewer line to go in. I'll mention meeting on Thursday, because I know that there has been discussion about, about getting the block in, the dirt blocks and the sewer and everything done.
Where is that?
I'll back here, behind. Sewer water, electricity is all there. Ready to go up. We started this process a year and a half ago. Water and sewer was... What are you waiting for?
We started downstairs in four years.
Can I ask a question? I guess that the old depot, who's, what is that gonna fall under for committee?
The chamber use is the buildings?
No, I say what committees it gonna fall under. It used to be under the parks.
I don't know, it needs cleaning really bad still. They had water going.
I'm fine with that staying under parks if you want to.
No, that'd be fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Because she asked me some questions. I won't bring them up tonight, but I guess it's just something we'll have to deal with at our meeting and try to go forward with, I guess.
What is the issue?
An exhaust fan that was supposed to have been done about two years ago.
There is one in there.
No, there's not. I was there Saturday, there's no exhaust fan.
Put the switch, and it comes on.
That's a diffuser for the air conditioner and heater, that's not an exhaust fan. There's, we'll discuss it at the meeting, I'll show you.
Okay. Anything else from the ERV?
Nope.
Thank you, Wes.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Lux?
Budgets need to be completed by the first meeting in September, so that's a month away. You need to set up some informational budget meetings over the next month. Last year, it took you three meetings to complete the process. You kind of discussed at Friday's meeting the personnel policy, and it kind of sounds like several of you want to go policy by policy there, so you might need a whole separate work session just for the personnel policy. So at minimum, you need four meetings, and I would suggest five, four budgets and one personnel policy at this point, setting meeting times, and if you get done before that, great.
Has any department has turned in their budget requests?
Yep, all of the budget requests had to be in by last Friday, last Wednesday is what we told them at the department head meeting, but several of them, we got them all in today. We, all of the budgets are with me now that compiles.
Did you look from last year, are they pretty comparable, or any major increases?
Major increases.
That's very...
Yes, yeah, can we reset the first one and?
Yeah, you can set one or two. I don't know if you want one a week for August, you know, pick a night, but we do them on Thursday night.
Isn't that pushing it pretty far out if we, you have to have it finished by the first of September, when we need to meet, or we usually have met earlier in August, like to try to get that done.
You can meet three times in one week, if you want to meet Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, get it all done in one week if you want.
I kind of think it's gonna take more than three meetings this year. I don't know why, I just feel that.
Well, let's schedule the first three.
Why don't we, let's shoot for two in one week, and then two the next, and...
We can have the first one no sooner than Thursday, that'll give me some time to finish compiling our weekend, I guess would work, too, if you're, I'm assuming you're doing them in the evenings, but afternoon. Could do them in the afternoon if you wanted.
Well, what we kind of talked about is, and I'm going kind of to my report, but the training that we're having from 3:30 to 5:00 on Thursday, we talked about taking a short break after that and then meeting right after for at least the informal informational budget meetings, to get one in this week. Just a proposal.
Thursday night?
So a budget meeting Thursday night, basically?
Where you can have it at? Down here, City Hall?
I'm fine with it being at City Hall.
Probably best, although we have numbers.
You can have it after this.
Well, we'll take a break after that, I mean, if people want to eat or...
I'm not supposed to be here.
What is this that you're holding out? What are you holding out?
You have it this week, I ain't gonna be there.
Yeah.
Do we have to have everyone there to have the informational meeting? So you'll just have to get...
It's the belt teams prayer for city council, belt teams prayer for city employees.
Talked about it.
I don't know what you're talking about.
We talked about it.
I don't have one of those.
I have, it was for us in here, stuff. From 3:30 to 5:00 on Thursday.
At the Mueller Center?
And that is at the Mueller Center. If you want to stay here, that's gonna be for the...
We'll notify the press that there's a potential for a quorum meeting present at that meeting, because it's a training session for...
So are you gonna want paid for that? Seriously, I mean...
I was not going to request that.
Okay.
It's not, that's never my decision, so...
So we just can set up one budget, you don't think we're gonna set up maybe three, you know, so some people can make...
I'm just proposing at least the first one this week on Thursday evening.
What time?
Well, we're done at 5:00 with the training, which I hope at least majority of us are out, and, you know, 6:30, hour and a half break.
6:30?
Does that work for you guys?
Sure.
And we would be at City Hall then at 6:30? All right.
Thursday at 6:30.
And then we can either decide on how we move forward with the remainder of the meetings at that time, or do we want to do that right now? Craig?
Ms. Mayor?
Do you want to just plan the other meeting, the subsequent meetings, Thursday night, or do you want to plan all three to four budget meetings right now?
Thursday.
Thursday night?
Seems like you asked me Thursday night.
All right, Craig says Thursday night.
The following week, you can do Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and you'll be done, if you think it's gonna take more than three.
Probably will take more than five.
Sounds like we've got some chiseling to do.
A bit of chiseling.
A lot.
Unless these fine folks wouldn't mind a tax increase this year.
Harley, you had another item?
I wanted to inform the council and the public that the Marine Corps League is doing a raffle, conducting a raffle fundraiser, Attachment 1388 of the Marine Corps League. They're selling 500 raffle tickets, will be sold for $5.00 each in and around Fall River County. A raffle will have a first prize of a new Remington 700 SPS, 308 rifle, and a second prize is a standard league K-bar knife, Marine Corps standard league K-bar knife. The drawing will be held September 27th at 7:00 PM at the American Legion, so I'm grateful there's going on there.
Don't, excuse me, Ernie, don't they have to get your approval from the council to have those raffles?
It just needs to show up in the minutes of the meetings.
That'll maybe, okay.
The council members and anyone else, I guess for that matter, that's affiliated with the city, election notices are out for the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance, which is the city's liability insurance company, and also the South Dakota Workers' Comp Pool, so they are taking nominations for any board members. There are three openings on the Public Assurance Liability Pool, and there are two openings on the Workers' Comp Pool. Just wanted to remind everyone that at the next council meeting, we'll be holding public hearings on zoning changes that were recommended by the planning and zoning at their last meeting. There are three items that will be heard at 7:15 at the next council meeting. And lastly, we received through the Facebook comments and TripAdvisor, we're monitoring all of that activity for Hot Springs and the plunge activity and golf course, and we had one comment that came back. We had a lot of comments, but this one was a notable one. "We had the pleasure of staying overnight in Hot Springs last week. It was extremely enjoyable, friendly people, nice accommodations, and your town is so charming. We believe it might be just the place to live." "Drought, border issues, and heat are encouraging my entire family to look at relocation and new opportunities. Having lived in Cheyenne, Wyoming for almost 10 years, I am accustomed to the winters. I want to also know that the Mammoth Site was extraordinary. The management at American Value Inn was extremely friendly and accommodating, clean, well-kept property, great continental breakfast, clean, well-kept pool, just a real relaxing experience for all of the family. We look forward to potential relocation to Hot Springs."
Nice.
Thanks for the good news.
Very nice.
Well, if you can just lure 10,000 more people, you'll be set.
I gotta do them one at a time. I eat an elephant one bite at a time, so we'll get one at a time here, and we'll do great.
All right. And I, thank you. I already reported on my training issues, so...
Motion to adjourn?
Okay.